Good afternoon, everyone. Ooh, was that go there? Hello, welcome to the first Charter School Committee meeting. I am Dr. Rosio Rivas. So, welcome today. And I would love to present, have my, I think we have some slides. We want to put in some slide one. There you go. Okay. So, second slide. So, the committee members for this Charter School Committee, myself, and I would love to have my committee member to my right introduce herself.
Hello. My name is Jackie Goldberg. I represent Board District Five. I'm also, at this point, president of the board.
And the other third committee member is Ms. Tanya Franklin Ortiz, Ms. Tanya Ortiz Franklin, and she will be here momentarily with us. So, let's begin the next slide. So, the purpose, just the purpose of this committee is to review the district policies and procedures related to charter schools, co-location arrangements and alternative agreements, and advise the Board of Education on changes and updates. And just to recap, the board resolution, creating charter schools' co-location policy to mitigate impacts caused by Proposition 39, was recently passed by the board. So, the co-location, Prop 39, was approved in 2000, and Prop 39 amended the Education Code to require each K through 12 school district in California to provide charter school facilities sufficient to accommodate charter schools, charter school students, and reasonably equivalent conditions. Which, when it passed, there were only 309 charter schools operating all throughout California, and today, there are approximately 300 charter schools operating in LAUSD alone, attended by over 150,000 students. Just setting the foundational ground for today's meeting. Also, Prop 39 colocations have caused a myriad of educational, operational, safety, financial, and legal challenges for the district. Parents, educators, and students are concerned that colocations undermine district-led initiatives to support students and schools, such as priority schools, Black Student Achievement Plan Schools, and also our community schools. Approved on September 26, 2023, the resolution calls for improvements, transparency, and accountability in charter co-location processes, and directs the creation of a forward-looking policy to be applied for the future co-location decisions. With that said, on the next slide, I just want to let everyone, the community and the public know that access to committee agendas and materials are accessible via the website at lausd.org/boe-number sign calendar. And the next meeting will be December 7 of this year. So, with that said, I would love to welcome our first presenters, who will present on the update on Proposition 39 policy development, and also regarding the current colocations for this academic year. I'm sorry, for the next academic year. So, here we have Ms. Veronica Reguine, who will present for us.
Thank you. So, good afternoon.
I'm sorry, real fast, Ms. Ortiz Franklin is remote with us in the building, and she'll be here momentarily, and she might want to say hi real fast.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Ortiz Franklin.
Hi, real fast. Yes, I will be in the boardroom in just a few moments. Thanks for having this committee, and excited to dig in today.
Beautiful. Okay. Well, thank you, and good afternoon, and thank you for inviting the Office of the Superintendent and other staff to speak at the Charter Committee. Again, I am Veronica Reguine. I'm the Chief Strategy Officer, and I also serve as the superintendent's designee as needed for Prop 39-related matters. Today, we will have a presentation from our Facilities Services Division regarding the district's E-Car process and the manner in which classrooms use to document. The matter in which schools use to document their classroom usage. Review of E-Car data is an essential step, but it is important to recognize it is one step in the district's Prop 39 space matching process. It is only one of many other steps. Hopefully, the presentation will help deepen your understanding of some of the data sources the district considers when meeting its Proposition 39 obligations to share space with charter schools. There have been many hours of public presentations and discussions regarding Prop 39 and the district's space allocation process, but as a high-level refresh, Prop 39 requires that school districts make available to each charter school operating in the district, in the school district, facilities that will accommodate all of the charter schools in its district, charter schools and district students. The district must make reasonable efforts to locate the charter school near where it wishes to locate, and shall not move the charter school unnecessarily. The facilities must be in conditions reasonably equivalent to those in which the students would be accommodated if they were attending other public schools at the district. LA Unified is working tirelessly to make the district of choice for all families, and we are succeeding. We must remember that the charter school students we are accommodating are district students. They live within district boundaries, but are making a different choice regarding the school they attend. If they choose to attend a district-operated school, we would be obligated to accommodate them, and would do so with open arms. This is admittedly a very challenging law to implement under the complex circumstances. All staff involved strive to fulfill our legal obligation in a manner that considers the needs of all students and minimizes disruptions. We know there are impacts, and we are committed to continue to do our best to limit these as much as possible. We especially thank the hard work of our staff at our co-located sites for their collaboration on behalf of students. As a reminder, the Prop 39 process occurs annually, and it is driven by some key regulatory timelines, and internal district timelines as well. Before any Proposition 39 facility request is received from a charter school, each district program notes both its current space utilization and anticipates space needs for the following school year. Charter schools make requests for the use of district facilities by November 1. Staff from various offices, including Regions, the Charter School Division, the Facilities Services Division, and the Office of the Superintendent engage in a complex space matching process resulting in the issuance of preliminary proposals of space to charter schools by February 1. Within 57 working days, the district reviews each facility's request for legal sufficiency, evaluates each charter school's average daily attendance projections, analyzes the district's schools' inventories and utilization of space, presents proposed findings to the Board of Education related to charter schools that cannot be accommodated on a single site, and issues preliminary proposals of space to charter schools. This year, the multi-site findings are intended to be brought to the Board of Education at its January 23 meeting. This is a highly complex iterative process that is undertaken on a very short timeline with the input of many different offices. Board offices and labor partners are invited to provide feedback during this process at an advisory meeting in December, before any proposed matcheses are made to the Office of the Superintendent by each region. Please note, staff does not make any independent decisions to allocate any Prop 39 facilities to charter schools. That authority has been delegated by the Board exclusively to the Superintendent or his designee only. At no time does anyone outside of our office make any decisions regarding allocations of space, whether in a preliminary proposal, a final offer, or an alternative agreement. The Office of the Superintendent considers recommendations from Regions and input from the Advisory Committee before authorizing the issuance of preliminary proposals. Similarly, the Office of the Superintendent considers recommendations from Regions before issuing final offers and any alternative agreements. Now, our Master Planning and Demographic Office is here to speak about E-Car, and I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Vince Maffey to share that presentation.
Good afternoon, committee members, board members. My name is Vincent Maffey, and I'm the Director of School Management Services and Demographics within Facilities. My office, 15 years ago, a little bit more than that, was tasked with understanding space utilization at our schools. And so, we developed a, along with other staff within LAUSD, developed a program to be able to do that. Originally, it was called CAR, and then it became E-Car. E-Car stands for Electronic Capacity Assessment Review. And it's a web-based platform that is utilized by our schools to be able to effectively tell us how they're utilizing space that particular year, this particular year. That data is gathered, and then is made available to all of our district staff for use within our, for use throughout, with our divisional partners. The schools that participate in E-Cast, in E-Car, excuse me, are all TE-12 schools, which include traditional schools, self-contained magnets, and special education schools. We also have what we call an alternative curriculum environment, E-Car, AC-Ecar. And in that E-Car, it's, and it's done offline, it's done off-cycle. In that E-Car, we ask community day schools, continuation high schools, opportunity, early education, community adult school, skill centers, regional centers, we ask them to share with us and tell us how they're utilizing their space. What this does is it gives us a well-rounded understanding of how our classrooms, classrooms are utilized each year on these particular sites. Now, the A schools don't participate in any other program. It's only for internal understanding of how space is utilized. We have many resources that we share with our schools before we ask them to go into their E-Car and begin to complete their work for that particular year. The first thing that occurs is we, they, when, once they begin to work on their E-Car, they'll come to this landing page, and in this landing page, you have a lot of information. You have many, many resources. You have direct contacts. Our personal numbers are on those, on these references where they can, schools can contact us if they have any questions. And there's timelines. There is the ability to understand exactly what is being asked of the schools. We also have a training video module that we made available to all LAUSD employees through my PLN. So, we always encourage principals, particularly new principals, to go out and to visit this website, and to be able to go through, so they can understand what is being asked of them to do. As Ms. Reguine said, we try to have a comprehensive understanding of space utilization. So, what that entails is, we want to make sure that not only we understand and how the schools are currently utilizing their classrooms, but also any future use that we may have at our schools by our divisional partners. Partners such as adult education, early education, Division of Special Ed, virtual academies, the Regions, non-academic planning. So, we ask them all to tell us any future need for next following school year that they will have, to be able to include into a baseline. This is a baseline that allows us to understand where the, where we start from. Also, we look at our internally, within facilities. We have a lot of projects that are happening at our schools. We have modernization programs. We have M&amp;O programs, and so, we want to make sure that we know how many classrooms will be taken offline or brought online interim housing, so we can have, again, a full understanding of how our classroom space is utilized and what the needs are in our Finally, at this point, what I'd like to do is I'd like to, we picked a school, to show you what a principal looks at and how he or she performs E-Car. And so, we'll walk you through it, and gives you an understanding of what a principal looks at and how he helps us understand how space is being utilized at his, or her school. We picked this particular school, Obama Global Prep, because it's a SPAN school, and it gives us the more, the most flexibility on how, on, so you can see what's, what we do with, what the principal has to do to complete their E-Car. So, to get started, this is the page, their dashboard page that they land on. You'll see that all other tabs, there are six tabs, and they're all red. And we ask them, so, all of those tabs, four of them have an asterisk next to the descriptor. And those are tabs that the principal is asked to perform some sort of task. The other tabs are for informational purposes. I'm going to skip the dashboard one, which is the one we're in right now, because we'll come back to it at the end of the presentation, because there's a lot of information that's added there once, once the E-Car is completed. So, we'll move on to the next tab. You can see that also, as soon as a principal completes a particular tab work, that it turns to green, it changes colors. So, the first tab that they come upon is the enrollment tab, and this information, this enrollment is, it's uploaded through Mises. It's directly norm day information, so it's uploaded to the system. Now, if the principal agrees with it, he presses the correct and moves on to the next tab. If he doesn't agree with it, or he or she doesn't agree with it, then they press incorrect, and there's a box that comes up, and they explain to us why they disagree with it. What we do is, when it comes back in-house, we look at it, we review it, we have a discussion, and we mitigate it to make sure that, that the principal's concerns or questions are addressed.
The board members asking if they can make the screen a bit bigger. Well, that's quite larger. Oh, boy.
That good? Okay, a little bit better. Okay, we'll, making it bigger, we'll have to move up and down on the page a little bit, but that's, that's okay. So, once the principal presses the correct, we're going to assume that this, well, we know that this enrollment is correct at this particular school for this school year. They press correct, and they move on to the next tab. So, this is the classroom inventory tab. So, this is the tab where all the real work is done, if you will. It's divided into three sections. You have a graphic, which is the map, right there on the left. Then you have a tabular, which sort of adds, not sort of, it adds up the classrooms as the, as the principal is dispersing them. And down below, we'll scroll a little bit, is where the actual work is being performed. Now, in this section, again, we try to make it as intuitive and as easy as possible. In this section, we have information regarding classroom utilization from the previous year. So, we, we did, we completed most of the classroom allocation, with the exception of a couple for this demonstration purpose. So, we have Classroom 126, where it's, this particular classroom, last year, it was identified as a district set-aside, and it was used for another school, the City of Angels Program. So, if there is no change to the program, and this year, the principal decides that they're going to use it the same way, then all the principal needs to do is just press confirm. And it's as easy as that, that particular classroom is taken care of. We'll go down a little bit more, and we'll come across another classroom. Here we go. So, this Classroom 101 was identified as instructional space. So, let's assume that the principal wants to change it to something else. They'll click on the radio button, and you'll scroll to the top. Now, this is all on one screen typically. And let's back out a little bit, Gasper. And so, you'll see there that it, the map takes you where that classroom is located. So, it gives the, the principal the understanding of where it is, so he can orient himself, so he can make sure that he properly identifies that space. So, so let's scroll down a little bit. And so, we're going to make an edit to this, to this particular classroom, and the principal has the opportunity or ability to change the allocation and program and make it anything they want to make it. And we'll finalize this and move on to the next one. We have one more to share with you. That's on Floor 3. Let's scroll down a little bit. Okay, here we go. So, this particular classroom, Classroom 315, is used by a co-location. We're going to assume that the principal says it's being utilized for the same this year, so we'll just go ahead. Hang on, before we confirm, Gasper, let's go to the top, and let's show, let's make sure that we're looking at the, to the, to the graphic, yes. And so, let's back out a little bit. And so, again, we make sure that this is where the classroom is located, and that's where we've identified it, so we'll go down and confirm that as well. Perfect. Once we've completed all of the classroom allocation, the principal is asked to finalize the allocation. So, he'll press that big yellow button, and we'll say, okay, every classroom has been done, and then that takes care of the classroom inventory allocation.
Board Member Goldberg, can you use the mic, because otherwise, we don't get it recorded for posterity.
I should know better. But what are the choices of, I saw instruction, I saw special ed, I saw administration. What are the other choices?
Sure, I can show you actually in the next tab. It'll show you right here, and this tab tells you, tells you all of it. So, we're going to go to the summary tab. So, in the summary tab, all of the allocations that the school has are these. So, we have special ed. If you're in elementary school, you'll have pre-K information. You have a co-location, you have district set-asides, you have school set-asides, out-of-service classrooms, instruction, and unconfirmed. So, what this section does, and this is, this is something that, again, it helps you, it helps the school understand how they're allocating their space. You can open up each individual section to see how the room is, how the rooms are being allocated this year, as well as how the rooms were allocated the previous year. And so, it gives you that comparison to make sure that you've identified the correct, the proper room. Let's go ahead and-
Scroll down again, please.
And do you have that same list for the program? Because sometimes the program matches the allocation, sometimes the programs look like they have different choices.
So, the program, based on the allocation, there's different programs. So, the programs that are identified in special ed would, will be different than the programs that are identified in district set-asides, school set-asides, and instruction. So, they're all different-
So, this school has no set-asides at all for anything?
No, no, they do, Ms. Goldberg. I'll share that-
It says zero and zero, that's why I was looking at it.
No, it's at the, it's right above it. So, so we're going to, you can see here that these are the school set-asides for this particular school. So, this year, they have identified nine classrooms for set-asides, and it's the same as they had last year, it appears. Last year, they also had nine classrooms as set-asides. The classroom number and the allocation, as well as the program, is identified. Also, whether it's a standard or small classroom, that's identified as well, because that goes into our calculation. Again, to the right of that, you have, well, the allocation that was used last year. So, in this particular year, Classroom 124 did not change. Let's see, there is one classroom that changed, so 133 down there, looks like. That was Beyond the Bell this year, and last year was an instructional classroom. So, you can see how the principal has the ability to make those changes.
Where does Beyond the Bell now go?
Beyond the Bell is utilizing this year Classroom 133.
Oh, I see, the left is the current year. I got it backwards.
It's okay, yeah, no problem. So, so, and you can expand all of the different programs. So, if you scroll to the top, you can actually see all of the programs and the classrooms as they are allocated at each individual category. Again, what is allocated for this year, what the principal decided to allocate this year, and what it was last year. So, once, again, this is a resource for the principal, so that, to make sure that they've correctly, and they feel comfortable with the way they've allocated their space. Once that's completed, we go to the capacity tab. In the capacity tab, you have two questions that we ask the school. So, did we miss any classrooms? Throughout the year, there may be classrooms that are added or taken out for a myriad of reasons, and so, we want to make sure that we properly capture that. And so, we ask them if there are any classrooms. In this particular case, we know that there isn't, so we'll go ahead and say no. Now, if there was, if there is a classroom that was missing, then we would say yes, and we would then ask, a pull-down menu would come up, and we would, they would answer some questions. Which classroom? What number? What are you using it for? And then, we would ensure that, 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 that classroom is properly identified. We'll go out to the school, we'll make sure that it's there, it's properly there, and then we'll add it to the E-Car report. So, in this instance, it's no, we're going to save this, and we're going to go to the second question. And the second question is, again, this is the teaching positions. Now, this is one of three components that we use to calculate capacity in our, in our report. So, the first one is enrollment, the second one is the classroom inventory, and the third one is the teaching position. So, we'll click on the teaching positions, and in this particular school, I know that the, the number of teachers that the school has, based on their classification report. So, this school has 24 classrooms, excuse me, 24 teachers for general education. They have four teachers that they've identified for, for special education, and two physical education teachers. And so, we'll go ahead and save this, and then calculate the capacity. And when we do that, it takes us to the summary page. If we can scroll down a little bit. And in this summary page, you'll find that the principal can look at their, their schools, how they're utilizing their classrooms. Here, you see how we know, how the, based on norming, how many classrooms are being allocated, and the maximum number of students that you can add to those classrooms. We scroll down a little bit further, and it tells us that the number of classrooms that are going to be needed for that particular year for instruction. And if you scroll down a little bit more, here, we see that you have a two semester capacity, and you have the enrollment for this particular school, and the difference between, between both. And if you scroll down just a little bit further, this again, gives you a summary of how the space has been allocated, to make sure that it's exactly what the principal had, had allocated. Once all of that is completed, they then go to the submit tab, the capacity turns green, to green, and they sign off, which it says that they've completed this report to the best of their abilities.
Now, back at the beginning, you had something that said classrooms that were out of, unusable or out of-
Out of use.
What does that mean?
Sure, that's a good, thank you. So, that means that if there's a classroom that, for some reason, the principal feels it can't be used for instruction or anything else for that matter, they identify it as such. It's an out-of-service classroom. They explain to us why they feel it's an out-of-service classroom, and then we'll go out and ensure that that's the case, and then figure out what to do with that. Do we repair it? What happens to that space? But it's classified as out of classroom, and it's not part of their inventory at that point. We take it off of their inventory.
Thank you, thank you.
So, now, we take you, once it's all completed, I come back to the, I come back to the, to the dashboard tab, because here is where we look at it, and there's just a lot of information that's useful for the, for the district, as well as for the school. So, if the, if the school, first of all, you have 10 years' worth of E-Cars that they can look, the principal or the school or anyone can look at and access. And so, you can see what enrollment, or how you were using your space a few years ago, and how that relates. The next section is enrollment review. And here, you have a history. So, if the enrollment, there was a challenge, or there was a question, this is where it would appear. And this is also where our response, or how we would deal with it, appears as well. And so, we want to make sure that, that it's identified and it's solved for. Below that is the classroom challenges that I talked about. So, if there was a classroom missing, if we, if a classroom is identified as a standard size, and the principal says, you know, this is a small classroom. And so, we, we review all of that and then disposition those challenges, to make sure that, that we fully vet it out. And then, the bottom portion talks a little bit about the administration of the school, and also, this section, which is the transactions that occur in the documents. So, going back and forth, when the, when the school submits it, whatever work we do to it, and then send it back to the school for a final review, and then sign off, all of that is documented in this section. What happens after E-Car is completed, and all of the E-Cars are accumulated, and all the data's accumulated, we upload it into- What happens after E-Car is completed, and all of the E-Cars are accumulated, and all the data's accumulated, we upload it into a lot of different tools that we have. We obviously share with our divisional partners to make sure that they have access to the most current information for schools. We also upload it into a, into a platform that's called Space Portal. So it's a site portal. Now, we'll put in Obama Global. And by the way, everyone who has an SSO has access to this site portal. You can put in the name of the school. We'll put it in there in a second. So it takes you right to the school. And let's look at the legend and first floor here. So here, now, this happens to be the color coding for last year. We haven't updated for this year yet, because we're still finalizing E-Car. But here, you see how the classroom spaces were allocated last year. And so it tells you, it gives you the, the classroom, what, what size it is. And we'll get to that in a second, and how it's being utilized. So we'll open up a classroom. And here, it tells you how the, the classroom is being utilized based on the school's allocation. So this particular classroom is allocated for instruction for that, for last year's school year. And it's approximately just a little over 1,400 square feet. Now, you can even dive a little bit deeper, and let's go into edit. If there was something that we needed to change, such as, we don't want this to be the gym anymore. We're going to, we're going to do something else with it, and it's changing its space name. So we can do those type of updates in this area as well. And so it has that relationship that allows us to then share this also with our divisional partners. And that's one component-
We can't see them, so tell us what the colors do mean. Yellow is-
Sure, so the green is a colocation. We're going to blow this up just a little bit for you. There you go. So you can see there in the legend that the green is colocation, the orange is district set-aside, the aqua is instruction, the red is out of service, the purple is pre-K. And, I don't see the other ones back down there. But we have school set-asides and special ed, which is purple, a deeper purple. So they're, they're all color-coded individually, so they can-
Where, where are the, the, the district school, district-
So the district, all of, all of them are district classrooms. But instructional classrooms are the green ones. Also, special ed is typically instruction. The orange is district set-asides. And the yellow is also a school set-aside. So those are all classrooms that, that would be utilized by, by the school. Or by the district as a whole.
Where are the, I don't see the charter school. It's green, I don't-
We can, we can, just, if you can pull out a little bit, please. And here we go. Let's go to the third floor. And here, the lime green, you can see are the charter classrooms. So let's click on one of them. And you can see that this particular classroom is being allocated to the colocation. It's approximately a little over 1,000 square feet. Again, this was last year's allocation.
No, I'm just trying, I didn't see where they were, so.
Yes. And that's how E-Car is looked at and managed for the district. And we'll, I think there's a question period at the end, and, yes, I'm done. Thank you.
So I heard him say that there'll be an opportunity to ask further questions at the end of them. Correct, Vince?
Yeah, I just couldn't see it.
There's a question.
All right, so if you can go, I think that is the correct slide. All right, so, so thank you, Vince, for that. Charter school facility requests are due, or were due, to the district on November 1st, if we look at this slide. The multi-year trend of fewer facilities requests that has continued for the 24, 25... Hold on, let me start that again, I'm sorry. So in this slide, we're looking at some of the facility requests. In November of, November 1st, facilities requests were due to the district before that date. There are 45 facility requests that we've received, including about 40 returning charters, five new charter schools proposed, which is about 51 students, sorry, which is down from 51 last year. And, and down 101 from, in the 25, 26 school years. It's considerably different, or down. This is a drop of about 55% in less than a decade. And there were only five new charter, charter schools to Prop 39 for the 24, 25 school year. Staff is preparing an informative for the Board of Education with additional details. I would like now to take this opportunity to share some actually very good news. Staff reports that all of the 19 charter schools that owed an over-allocation reimbursement for last year have made full payment to the district. This totals approximately $2.2 million. These amounts will be distributed to each applicable school, district school site for the use at the discretion of the school site council, consistent with the resolution previously adopted by the board. Do one slide. And lastly, related to the superintendent's office ongoing development of the colocation policy, immediately following the board's adoption of the resolution, we committed efforts to further examine the district's current space utilization and allocation practices. We've gathered stakeholder input and aligned policy changes to the district legal obligation. The superintendent and the team will be providing additional updates and details to the board as the process continues to move forward. The work will remain focused on the common objectives of having policy and practice that, one, adheres to the resolution. It is thoughtful, well-informed, operationally feasible and legally compliant, and is most effective in operational feasible in improving the learning environments of the students at co-located sites. And that concludes our presentation. And the team is here, as well as myself, as well as Facility Division members, to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your presentation. Also, thank you, Mr. Maffei, for your presentation as well. I'm going to open up the discussion questions to my committee members. I'll start first with Board Member Goldberg. Oh, okay, okay, Tanya, she's pushing over to you. Go ahead.
Thank you, yeah, this was very helpful to walk through E-Car. I had a lot of questions about that, so it was good to see. But maybe I'll start there, because I still have a few more questions on the E-Car process. And I don't know if it helps to have the website up, or if it's too late for that. But, so the options available for principals to select allocation were district set-asides, school set-asides, out-of-service, instruction, special ed, pre-K. So that was the list of allocation. What I started to ask about, and maybe we can go into it a little bit, what are some examples of the programs of, like, the district set-aside, the school set-aside, the instruction you were starting to say, like, special education? But I'd sort of love to see the next layer. Because, you know, one of our concerns has been art classrooms, or RJ rooms, or community school room. Are those words somewhere in here that schools can choose from? I don't know if it's an allocation or a program, or if you can help us understand the layers.
Absolutely, thank you. So, yes, we do have a lot of those type of requests under program. And so when we look at a school set-aside, we, we, we very much try to understand how school, and schools are different, so they utilize space a little bit differently. And so we'll look at what the requests are in a particular school. And if it's a valid request, once the, the region asks, signs in, and, and, and agrees with it, then it's, it's, it's a, it's a program that's added to the, to the, to the allocation.
Are they dropdown menus? Or can they add whatever?
They are, they are dropdown menus. Let me take you to some. So let's go to the top, please, and let's go to the classroom inventory. And we're going to open up a used classroom, thank you. And so we're going, go ahead, go ahead, let's view, we're in the view, so we need to go... Give us a quick second, and we'll get you there.
Sure, no, this is helpful. It'd also be helpful to know what's a district set-aside versus a school set-aside options.
Absolutely, absolutely. So we can, we can share that with you. We're going to, here we go.
Is any classroom that's not used for instruction called a school set-aside?
No, we have, so we have, again, all the categories that have been identified.
Well, I mean, special ed is a classroom still.
Correct, so you have special ed, you have early, early education, you have-
But those are all instructional classrooms.
And there's also district and school set-asides. Those are not instructional spaces.
Okay, I'm still trying to find out more about that. I'll leave you to ask those questions.
All right, so here we have a classroom, and let's go to the allocation. We have a pull-down, down, a pull-down menu, and we're going to go to special ed. So let's go, we're going to say that this classroom is being converted to special ed. So the pull-down, go ahead, let's pull down the menu. So these are all the, the programs that special ed has facilitated and said, "These are programs that we need to add to our dropdown menu." And so the schools have the ability to, to pick one of these class, one of these allocations or programs for that, for that particular allocation. Yes, ma'am?
Is there something in there that says itinerant teacher space?
So itinerant is, we, is under the school set-asides. And we'll go, we'll get there in a second. I'll show, I'll show you, I'll show you those. And so under, we'll go to district set-asides. Now, you asked what the question is between district and school set-aside. So let's look at district set-asides, and we'll put, do down the pull-down menu. So these are all allocations and programs that the, that serve the district-wide function, that are, that are needed for district-wide operations. So, for example, we still have a local district, but it's the COSA's offices. So some classrooms were identified as a COSA Office Police Station, or Substation for Police. We have clinics, you can see food services. So all of these are district allocations for set-asides. We also have-
And sorry, just on the district set-aside, does someone at the district level have to say that they're using that versus the school? Like, sort of what determines that it's district professional development versus school professional development?
So, thank you for the question. So what, what happens is that the school tells us, "Well, this is a district set-aside for these reasons, because we're using it as professional development for the region." And so we'll contact the region, we'll contact the appropriate people to ensure that, that that is what they're using that space for. Once that occurs, then we, we, we go ahead and approve it and moves on.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's the way it works. It isn't, so it's, it's a check and balance. There's a lot of checks and balances with, with divisional partners, with regions, with, with, with different offices within LAUSD.
Okay, I'd love to see the school set-asides.
So now we go to the school, so we'll go to school set-asides. And we have a pull-down menu. And so these are the different type of allocations or programs that have been made available for school set-asides. So you can see that there's a wide range of descriptors that the school use for set-asides. Now, there may be some that we don't have here. And so there is, and stop there for a second, I'm sorry. Let's go back down a little bit. There is one that says, "Other, please specify." So let's go ahead and click on that. So assuming that all of the descriptors we have in the school set-asides doesn't match anything that you have that, that classroom used for. So we, you can, you can then identify this program as other. And in this area, in this section, you can actually write in what you're using that space for, whether it's a, on a district set-aside level or on a school level.
That's super helpful. And I don't know if we have a list of that, that you could make available to the board members of the dropdowns, because I think we'd be interested in seeing all of it. I mean, I saw city year, I saw college track, I saw art, I saw a lot of things, yeah.
Yes, we'll be more than happy to, sure, we can make that available to you.
That'd be great. And then, thinking about the colocation requests, do the charter schools have a similar list for when they're requesting space? What level of detail does the, do the requested classrooms come in at?
I can speak to the, to the, how we identify it in E-Car. So we are, we are, we are told, the school, actually, will identify the spaces that they've allocated or that they've agreed to, to share, to co-locate the charter school at. And so we validate that to make sure that that's the case. And we then move it forward or approve it as, as, as that use for, for that particular classroom. So the, 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 the level of detail that we go into is, it's either instruction space, or it's administrative space for the colocation.
Okay, so they don't have-
The extensive list that we have.
Instruction or administrative, those are the choices for the charters. Okay, that's helpful. And then, okay, sorry, I probably have quite a few follow-ups, and I want to make sure that it's like a dialogue. But maybe just for Ms. Adagene, before I cede my time, I wanted to just check in on the numbers of colocations. I think you said we're going down again, and it sounds like that was a trend. Can you share or send in follow-up, if we don't have it today? Like, the total number of charter schools, independent schools, and then those that are requesting Prop 39, you shared today was 45. And are there other co-located outside of Prop 39 within those categories?
We can give that, so you're, the team could actually provide that information later on, unless we'll say has that off the top of his head, which I know he doesn't. But we, we can give you the lay of the land and follow up with that with you.
Okay, and just, if you had a general, like, theory about, like, what is contributing to the reduction over time of less requested space?
Good afternoon, Board Member, Board Members. I'll stick with the other director of Charter Schools Division. First, the part of it is, schools are also obtaining private sites. And so that is, that is one reason that they're doing so. Every cycle, we may hear from schools that are exploring a private site. And so that may be a reason for their not submitting a request in the first place.
Okay, that's helpful. And then there was something on our materials about a few schools that were still pending requests?
As part of our-
Who additional schools under review? Yeah, what is that?
As part of the deliberative process, including with council, as we receive the requests, you know, whatever we receive November 1st, we need to evaluate that and any other cases that come up. So we're still in review of two charter schools specifically.
And those are not included in the 45 currently?
No.
Okay, so it could be 47 that are requesting?
Depending on the results of the evaluation.
Okay, great. And then I guess my last one is just, I'm trying to wrap my head around. So schools will put in what they are using space for. Charters will request either instruction or administrative. Where there is a greater request than a school might say is available? Like, how does that determination happen? So if a school says this is a set-aside, at what point would the district say, "Actually, you can't set that aside, because we need that space to be able to offer a colocation at one, at one site versus multiple sites?" Is, or, like, at what point does that, do those conversations happen? Versus, a principal puts in all of their usage, and do we just say, "Yes, all of those spaces are being used," or do we challenge any of those spaces? Because, like, there was some, some language in there about, like, contested or challenged, or I forgot what the language was. Is it like a back and forth on any of those set-asides? And does that happen during the Prop 39, or is that all alternative agreements?
If I understand, first, I would say to the first part of your question, charter schools submit in District ADA projections, and we then make an allocation based on those after our review. So just, just to put one point in terms of instructional space, office space, et cetera. Secondly, I would refer back to Mr. Maffei's comments in terms of the iterative process to your second question in terms of E-Car. That there's follow-up-
There is a little bit of a back and forth. So just because a principal said it was a set-aside doesn't necessarily mean that space is guaranteed to stay that same set-aside for next year.
Correct. And that conversation back and forth does include the regional staff, and includes representatives from Charter School Division. And, and the regional staff is in communication with the school. So it goes back and forth, and it's not a one-done, it's a multiple conversation process.
And I, so, sorry, I'm still, like, wrapping my head around all of these processes, too. Does that back and forth happen before the offers to charters are made? Or does that happen afterwards in an alternative agreement?
For, as part of the district's internal practices to try to understand the landscape, November 1st is also in- November 1st is also internally where district schools, to the maximum extent possible, are setting up their E-CAR, having those conversations, so that we understand what the needs of the district school are. So, majority of the time, that happens all before November 1st, certainly with additional information that can come at any point to be considered. In terms of the alternative agreement concept, that's a little bit of a different piece of the, of the puzzle. But, for example, that's more about charter schools, district schools considering the space, and maybe there's mutual agreement that could benefit both parties.
Yeah, we saw it on one of the Obama examples. It said alt-agreement below the line, so was curious where that fitted. But I'll pause there. I know my colleagues have questions. Thanks.
So I have something like 227 independent charter schools in the district.
221, oh no.
Oh, so there's six fewer, okay.
Let me make sure, I'm checking my numbers.
All right. Well, this is an old...
And 51 affiliated.
Yeah, I got that. So it's down to 221 from 227. Okay. We're going to be having meeting, this committee was really largely constituted, not for this purpose, but because we're about to have renewal discussions of 63, 83, and 50 in different years.
Thereabouts.
Which was numbers I got from you, so they may change slightly, but that's pretty close. So we're going to be, we're going to be having regular meetings on this. But I'm a little concerned. I'm concerned that somehow or another, we don't really have a way to deal with the current past motion for another school year. Seems to me, if there are only five schools requesting, and you know what we're looking for, that really the only unsettled issue is the actual definition of a vacant classroom. So with only five schools that we're talking about, I want you to give me a really deep description about why you cannot use what we passed as a motion to do those five schools.
Right. So what I can't, what I can't say is, please, I need, I want to be assured that for the 25, 24, 25 Proposition 39 cycle, which has already started, our office will work with staff to avoid new co-locations and mitigate impacts to community schools, to priority schools, and schools with B-SAP designations, and, and best preserve the essential programmatic spaces. All as operationally feasible and permitted by law. And that's, that's what I can provide you with right now.
Yeah, well, that, that's what we were hoping for. I mean, we don't, we don't expect that the final, final policy put into stone, which is what we do around here, will happen. But we do know that it's pretty clear where the board wants. For example, I just took your list, I don't know which one of you gave it to me, of the charter school colocations and who they're co-located with.
If it's a good list, if it's a good list, it's for me. But if the list isn't good, it's from, it's from somebody else.
I got that. I understand how that works. In it, I found 17 co-located schools where the district school has grades lower than the charter school, so we're feeding into them. Lot of folks at those schools really hate that. I'm not suggesting for this year.
Right.
But if there were ever to be an occasion that one of these schools was growing and they're losing, I would like us to put it a very high priority, having their schools feed into ours, just because strategically it makes more sense. Okay, so that's, that's, that's one thing I just want to raise, because I, I was surprised that there were so many that aren't. But we got an awful lot of elementary schools feeding into independent charter middle schools. And, and I hope that that's something that we're looking at now and in the future. I'm concerned at the principals who are still telling me they don't exactly understand what you want them to do on E-CAR. And they all agree, because I've asked them, that they attended some sort of training. Okay, so as I said, did you, they're still not clear, a lot of them, as what a school set aside is. So I hope that at some point or another, we go over that, and go over that, and go over that, because some of them said, well, what if I put too many? What if I think I have six and they think I have four? I said, well, they'll talk to you about it. Well, are they, are they just going to tell me I only get four? You're hearing, you're hearing what I'm hearing. That's all I want to say to you.
Yes.
And there's only five, so I'm hopeful that we can be really sensitive to those kinds of questions with those five, right?
So there's five new ones, right? But we go through Prop 39 allocations every year. Every application every year gets revisited. So it's not just the one and done. It's actually all of them get revisited every year. So, yes, we will, I will take a, a personal commitment to connect with Mr. Maffey and see what other professional development we can provide to support the principals in understanding the E-CAR process. Know that when I was a, I was a principal for 15 years, both at an elementary and middle school, my E-CAR process was before E-CAR. It was all on paper pen.
Yeah.
First, it was in person. So I can understand the complexities of shifting from what we used to do on paper to something maybe of a system. So I'll commit to ensuring that whatever we are providing as a district to support the principals in understanding the process, I'll review it and make sure that, if it makes sense to me, I'm sure that it'll make sense to others, I hope, and commit to making sure that's a lot clear.
I, I think, are we, are we still saying to some schools, we don't want you to have a magnet because we may need the space for a charter?
Never. No.
Don't say never.
I said, not under, not under my watch. I'm going to say that, and I say that because last year, I, up until, from 2015 to last year, I oversaw magnet programs. So that is something that was not part of the conversations of my magnet programs. What I can't say is, all programs, all district programs are being critically and strategically reviewed in the sense of where it makes sense for our schools. So the processes in which we are taking, moving forward, especially under the new strategic plan, is we're being very strategic in how we open our programs up in our schools, and ensuring that we're providing the better programs and the qualities and, and the, the elementary through high school pathways that we need to do. So we're, we're taking a critical look in how we open up our programs in our district better.
Good, good. We have about 30, I'm guessing, closely, alternative agreements this year. Most came after May of last year, so late in the process. I assume that's after they decided yes or no, and we decided yes or no, and now we're looking for another solution. So my question is, because the resolution calls us to vote on those, I think, I'm looking for direction on how to make sure that we do this in a timely fashion, and I hope you'll work with the Chair of this committee, because we can set any dates we need to, even if it's just for an item of approving one of these, you know what I'm saying? I just want you to know that we're flexible in being able to, with only 48 hours' notice, saying, we're going to have a meeting of this committee to approve a, a...
And that's appreciated, because as being the designee for the superintendent, they do come, it, it really is a, a true collaborative, collaboration between the principals of the sites, that, and work through our office to ensure that they're both amicable to the decisions that they want to enter into. And there is a timeline and a window that we have to do a lot of that in. So I'm appreciative of the flexibility. I wish I can say that they, there is a, a very clean process in when those things happen, but sometimes there isn't.
Well, that's what I'm saying to you.
Yes. So we will have to see...
You have the person who can schedule a meeting.
Yes.
And you have a chair who's willing to have them scheduled. So you just let me know 48 hours, we'll get them done. We're not, we do not intend to hold up your processes, is what I'm trying to say.
Willing, willing to work around that. Yes.
Okay. So just so that you know, we're, we're doing that. I think one of the most common complaints was that there's no space for folks who are itinerant. And I got that both from charter schools as well as district schools. So are we, in fact, assigning space for itinerant special ed people? So I got that complaint both from charter schools and from district schools.
Thank you for the question. We, we don't assign classroom space to, to itinerants or any other program that the school may want. The school actually assigns for it.
I see.
And so what happens...
But if they only get three set asides, and they want music, art, and, I don't know, robotics, then, you know what I'm saying? I'm, I'm arguing for the fact that there should be, wherever there are people who are itinerant, there should be a space for them. And it looks like now, some schools have to decide either or, and that's both at the charter level as well as the district school level.
At some schools, the space is, is very limited. And so there isn't additional space. And so the school has to decide what benefits them the most. Now, an itinerant program can be, can be had at a school at different locations. They don't necessarily need, I would assume, a classroom. And so, again, it's up to the school to determine the space that they need and utilize to the best that they can for their students.
All right. I'm going to, I'm going to stop here and maybe have a couple of other things, maybe I'll come back to after you've had your questions.
Very well. I, I have a few questions, because the majority of my questions were already asked by both of the board members, which is fine. So my quick question, I think, is from Mr. Maffey, in terms of the E-CAR. What, throughout your, you know, position, throughout the time that you've been in this position, what have been, apart from training and understanding how to fill it out, what have been the major challenges of principals when, when it comes to completing the E-CAR, or any, any sort of challenges that they face?
Thank you for the question. So the biggest, I think, challenge that principals have is the demands that are put on them just in general. And so they understand that this is a very important process for the district, to be able to understand space utilization, so we can maximize how we utilize our space. And so principals, just in general, are rushing through the, the day, and this is another thing that they have to add to their, to their list. And so we try to work with them, excuse me, we try to work with them to ensure that we make this as painless as possible. For example, we have two sessions a day that they can come in every day during the E-CAR period. We have one in the morning and one in the afternoon, that they can pop in. They don't have to make an appointment and ask their questions. We have breakout rooms that we can go into. We can, if they'd like to have one-on-ones, we can certainly, we do that with them. And so we try to be as accommodating as possible. Principals just, just over, overtask.
And say, for instance, scenario, I don't know if this has been the case in your experience, when a principal has completed an E-CAR, right, by November 1st, and say, for instance, a month or in the spring semester, they realize, oh, we want to add another program because we received a grant, or where their case may be, and they want to change the designation of a classroom, how, how easy or difficult is that process? Or walk us through how the principal will have to change that because of that?
Sure, thank you. So when a principal, E-CAR is a snapshot in time. It's very much like norm de ya, right? And so it's, it's, it's the way they're utilizing the space when they completed their E-CAR. We also know that space is flexible and, and may need to change, particularly at midterm. You have a lot of ins and outs, teachers coming, maybe new teachers coming in, new programs. And so we have that conversation with the school. They let us know that this is how they're going to change a space. If it isn't an impact on, by, by this time, if it isn't an impact on any other program that, that is maybe coming to that particular school, whether it's a modernization, part of the modernization, or whether one of the divisional partners needs a space, if there's no impact, then we work with the school to expedite that request. We, we note it, and then we ensure that that information is already plugged into the next year's E-CAR. So when they go to next, when, when next year rolls around, they don't have to remember about that shift they made. It's already identified for them.
And in the E-CAR, I don't know how, if you receive reports, is there an easy way, once the E-CAR, once the principals have finished inputting, is there a process where you receive reports, and a report, for instance, on the amount of allocated space, or if there's been an increase of designations, or anything like that? Any sorts of reports that you can sort of develop?
Yes. So we do, we do have the ability, once we have the information, it's data, we can, we can assimilate it any way we want. So if you'd like to know how many classrooms are being utilized for instruction district-wide, we can generate that information. How many, any, 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 any relationship we can, we can certainly provide.
But has that been done previously, with reports, and it's being utilized for that? Or is it only on special cases?
I, I know that our divisional partners look at it. They look at those lists, and how space is being utilized, and how much space is available at our schools.
And you mentioned in, sort of confirming if this class is, or the, the space is being utilized for that, you have to go physically and make sure, and, so there's, there's checks and balances, right? So for instance, say, for instance, you, or your office says, yes, it's being utilized, but then the region says, well, no, you know, there's, like, when, there's a disagreement. Is there a process to address that disagreement, or has there been instances in that?
Yes, that's a good question. Thank you. So I have an appointment, I have an appointment, a commitment that I made to a school, and, and she'll know, before the Thanksgiving holiday. She explained to me that there are two classrooms, and we reviewed them together online, that she doesn't believe there should be, there should be instructional classrooms for a lot of different reasons. I looked at them, I said, I'll, I'll come out personally, and we'll take a look at these classrooms. And if they're not instructional spaces, or if they can't be utilized for instructional spaces, then we'll certainly remove them from your instructional column. And so we do go out to schools as often as we need to or can. Our, our staff is limited, our time is limited, but, but we, whenever we can, or whenever is needed, we'll go out to a school. Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. The other questions I have, really, I'm not sure if it's for Ms. Adagene, or Mr. Jose Cugeter, it's a possibly council, I just want to know who in the district is responsible for calculating and verifying unallocated space for Prop 39? I know you mentioned that all regions can come together, but in, in essence, who, is there a calculation, is there verification, or is just each region sort of decides on their own how to...
For the, yeah, for the district schools, right? I mean, it's, it's an effort of multi-offices. So it's not, it's information that facilities provides, as well as what the principal has identified. Sometimes it's input from the district, district sometimes, region, I should say, region sometimes goes out and does a physical walk. I mean, it's, so it's multiple offices that actually determine the space, how it's being utilized, at the moment in which those decisions are being made. So...
Is there a policy, an actual policy, or is just a...
The resolution did require an actual physical because of a thing that happened at one of the schools, where they didn't even know that there was already a charter school there.
Yes. So there, every situation is different, and so we have to take it on a case-by-case. It's really hard to, to actually stipulate, this is how we're going to do it, because it, it will differ depending on the needs of the school and the needs of, of the situation. So both the school that, the traditional public school, as well as the non-traditional public school.
Say, for instance, a quick scenario that popped in my head. For instance, in, in finding space, right, for a, for a charter school for a co-location, you mentioned that there is a process when the principal is alerted and says, this is the space that is going to be used. Is there a, a process when, say, for instance, a principal says, or the school community says, no, you cannot, we need this classroom, but, you know, your office, or, you know, the district leadership says, well, we actually need that space to be able to complete this, right? So is there a, a process where, how, how is, when is that classroom honored, right? So if a school designated that space to be an art, or a computer, or a parent center, or itinerant, and there is a challenge, who takes honor, which, who is, which, who is honored in terms of how that classroom has been designated?
So if my, if my memory serves me correct, and what I've learned through the process of supervising the, the division, it's a conversation between the region and the school, and then the region with our offices as well. And it is a multiple conversation and identification, and coming to conclusions of, of the actual use of space. So it's not a, it's not a single process, and, and a lot of the times, it's the region that is connecting with the school, or the regions connecting with us. At the end of the day, the regions provide us a recommendation of offers, and it is, it is, as the designee of the superintendent, I make the final approval, based on the region's recommendation. They're closest to the work, they're working with the principal, so that recommendation that comes in... that comes in, for the most, from the region, I don't think, under my leadership, I've not turned away, I've not said no to a regional recommendation.
So, basically, the regional recommendation takes precedence over the school, or the community, or any?
I'm not going to say that it takes precedence, because they do work closely with the school site, in order to make those final determinations.
The other question, what is the current legal definition of shared space? How is share, space sharing governed in our campuses? Can you take us down the process of shared space?
We'd have to refer that to council for the appropriate response, I would say.
Okay, can we have somebody from council to help us? Mr. Nathan Pearson is here.
Good afternoon, Nathan Ryerson, Office General Counsel. To your question, the definition of shared space is not found in the Prop 39 law, it's not found in the Prop 39 regulations. It is, the law and the regulations contemplate three different types of space to be allocated to a charter school. Number one, you have classrooms or teaching stations. Number two, you have specialized classrooms. And number three, you have non-teaching stations. Those second two categories, the district is required to share a portion of them, the specialized and the non-teaching station spaces. So, shared space is really a colloquial term, it's not in the law, but it's in reference to that proportionate amount of those types of spaces that a school district shares, or is obligated to share with a charter school.
We've had schools in the past that are co-located, that say that they won't pay anything into the cost of keeping the bathrooms clean, because they only have one bathroom that they use, and they don't let anybody else use it, and they clean it themselves. Yet, the school says that kids at lunch and recess use all the bathrooms. How do we deal with issues like that, that come up somewhat commonly?
Yeah, and I'll allow the non-legal operational team to address that, but generally speaking, from a legal perspective, the agreement that the charter school and the district have, the facilities use agreement, specifically includes a facilities cost amount, and it's based on a per-square-foot amount that the charter school occupies. That is both for the exclusive use spaces, and the shared spaces. Shared spaces, generally speaking, would be restrooms, unless the co-located programs have an arrangement where each program will have their own separate bathrooms, the default is that all the restrooms on the campus would be shared, in a proportionate basis.
But what does a principal do if the charter school principal says, we don't use your bathrooms, and we only use one of them, we have one that furthers out from most of the, that's the one we, I have, I'm not making this up, so I'm, that's why I'm asking it.
If the charter school has been allocated use of the restroom, it is obligated, under the agreement, to pay the amount.
They use them or not?
They pay the amount, the principal doesn't collect that amount, central office staff is responsible for that collection, and there's recourse if the charter school does not.
And shared space includes things like the gym, gymnasium, outdoor play areas, cafeteria, the library, auditorium, am I correct?
Those are illustrative examples, and on each case-by-case basis, it would depend on that particular sharing arrangement between the co-located programs, whether or not the charter school would have those shared use rights. As a default, yes, the charter school would receive shared use of those types of spaces.
I'm not saying they shouldn't, I'm just saying that there are some disputes at schools as to who gets what, on what time, and how, if you have six lunch periods because of the two schools, who gets the last one, who gets the first one?
And Board President and Board members, as issues arise in the school year, et cetera, we have dedicated operations coordinators that also work with the regions, go to the school sites to address issues that may arise, exactly as you're describing, and have to work through, here's what the agreement is, let's make sure we fulfill this. So, please feel free to apprise, as those are schools often do, and our team responds to those immediately.
When they turn in their November 1st application, I'm not talking about the schools that have been, that are already there, and they're going to stay there, but the new ones, do they say where they want to go?
In the requests, yes, usually there's a.
So, they name a school?
Usually, yes.
And we usually agree with them on their school?
Well, the, we have to consider that, the conversation is not.
But in practice, we usually agree, or we don't usually agree?
Not, I don't have the numbers, it's not always a one-to-one. We have to then assess, and certainly consider that very seriously, but then we have to go through the deliberative process, and it may not end up exactly where, but near where they're intending, they're requesting to be.
That's kind of a sticking point for me a little bit, because we have a lot of empty space, in schools where they, the charter school would hardly fill even most of the empty space, but they didn't request that school, so we don't offer it. Instead, we offer a school that they requested, in which now every classroom will be used, okay? And if either side grows, we got a problem. I don't understand what obligates us to say, I'm not saying that if you ask for something in San Pedro, we're going to send you to the North Valley, I'm not talking about game playing. But I am talking about that there are schools that are not being considered, that have considerable space, because they just weren't requested, and a school which doesn't have considerable space feels oppressed by the fact that those other folks are not being considered. And I'm wondering, is there a way in our process to say to them, well, that's a perfectly good idea, but, you know, two and a half miles away is this school here, which has so many empty classrooms, you can't believe it, nobody will be in each other's hair?
That's absolutely a consideration.
Okay.
So, it does not stop solely at, here is where we wish to be, and that's it. We look at a variety of data points to assess, will that be, will that meet our legal obligation, but also minimize those impacts that we've talked about?
The reason this comes up, is I have a couple of schools right now that are co-located, they're not unhappy with each other, I'm not talking about disputes, but both of them have ETK classes, and no place to put them next year, both the charter school and the district school. And they don't have any place to put them, because they filled all the classrooms. That's what I'm worried about. I'm worried about, as we're growing the baby end of this process here, I don't want somebody to come to say to me, well, they can't go to the school right near where they live, because there's no room for them. Are we planning for the fact that the state is about to make ETK for everybody, and?
As Mr. Maffey referenced, that is cataloged in E-CAR, and very much a consideration, and also.
But they're already there, is the problem.
This annual process, then it'll be revisited, to assess each year, those changes, and at times, we need to consider a different site, there may need to be a multi-site offer, with which the board is familiar, et cetera.
Okay, and finally, in the committee of the whole, when we had this discussion, we talked about having some hypothetical scenarios, and I had hoped we might have some of those today, but I'm going to give you one. Okay, we've got a school that is looking at being one of your final five-location offers, but the school has a set-aside for a band room, dual-language program, and IEP room, because they have a large number of students that are in special ed, an unusually large number, so they actually have a room they use for IEP, so they don't have to keep shifting everybody around. They are told that they can have only two of those spaces, because of the amount of space needed by the school. Can they appeal that? Can they say, no, no, I really need the three that I told you I need? And, can, who do they appeal to if they don't like the outcome? Can they?
First, there's a, Mr. Maffey talked about in the E-CAR process, I'm not sure if you're speaking beyond that. In terms of the matching process, the school's needs, as documented, are very much considered, and then there would be that discussion, as Ms. Aragui mentioned, with the region, to indicate, no, this is, we need this further consideration. Please know that in that process, there may be multiple sites considered, to assess how to minimize impacts, and still meet our legal obligations. Certainly not all of those schools are shown, but they're very much considered in the process. So, we would encourage principals to continue to, sorry, to continue to share their voice with their regions, and the E-CAR process, et cetera, for that consideration in the process.
This is not a hypothetical, what I'm mentioning to you. They have a dual-language program that they add a grade to every year, and they don't know how they're going to do that anymore, okay? Because there's just not enough space. I'm wondering if we could ask you, as you look at these next five, and any others that might come up, that we not fill every room, that we find schools that do have extra spaces, even after both schools have their needs met? Because I do believe between ETK, and now some immigration changes, that are going to put us with a lot more Russian student-speaking students, and more Ukrainian-speaking students, and so forth, as the world changes, we're going to have growth in places that are, people are already co-located, and every room is being used. So, I'm just urging you, as we go forward, don't do any that end up with every room, or almost every room being used, because we just don't know, we know we're going to continue to lose students, I'm not saying that this is going to be a big turnaround, but we are already seeing locations in the district where this is happening. And I don't want to ever have us be in a situation where we say to both of those schools, neither of you can have anybody at all, I'm sorry, I have a problem at home, so I'm trying to keep track of it, so, excuse me for.
Okay, I understand. So, to your answer?
You know what I'm saying, so I'm asking us to look a little differently about how we fill a school even now.
So, a couple of things, definitely, the annual process for Prop 39 is critical, and we encourage our principals to also be thinking forward, as well as they're seeing their patterns coming. Now, for example, you know, I enrolled, I had a norm-day number of such in, say, November, right, October, November, but, and I know, and all of a sudden, my patterns are starting to increase, so when I do the next process, then thinking, you know what, I'm starting to see an uptick, and I always get an uptick, I'm going to advocate, so when they do their E-CAR process, they're keeping that in mind, number one. Number two, I really, and we can do this offline, like to know specifically the schools that you have concerns with, so that I can actually take a deeper, we can take a deeper look into that, and see where we can support, or clarify, or ensure that certain things are put in place. So, if we could do that offline, I would love to look into that.
Thank you.
Okay, a few more questions from a board member, T. Franklin.
Thank you, yeah, the discussion is helpful, it's generating more ideas. So, do we generally have a limit on the number of set-asides that a school can ask for? Sort of, how do you, how do we frame that? I could see a school asking for 15, another school asking for one, do we have them talk to each other about it? How do we approach that?
So, there isn't a limit, per se, it falls on the, I'm trying to be very careful.
Got a friend coming.
No, it falls under the purview of the principal to be forthright in regards to how they're going to use the space, right? And I'm just going to give a general example, this is not a true, this does not exist in LUSD as we know it, at least I don't, but let's say there's a site that has a total of 20 classrooms, instructional rooms, I'm not talking about, you know, office space, and the enrollment at that school site is indicating that they only have enough students to really just fill 10 of those rooms, right? And the principal in E-CAR says, I'm going to use the other 10 for set-asides.
Yeah, no.
It's really hard to be able to justify 10 set-asides for a school site of that enrollment. So, but the principal will put that in their E-CAR, right? So, through this process, is how we work through the schools, and actually come to some agreement with the principal, and honestly, what is exactly that they need, and not take away from the programs that they have in place. A dual-language program, for example, is not going to be taken away, if there's, if it's in that path, but I have to anticipate, I have dual-language students in kinder now, they're going to go to first-grade dual-language, I'm going to need a room for that dual-language school next year, I do that in November. So, so there isn't a set, but there is a, we start with the principal being forthright in how they're going to use her space, as best as they know they're going to use it, and then we move from there, right?
Is there any sort of record about this initial request of too many set-asides, and then that negotiation to reduce the number of, I would just be curious, how many schools has this applied to? Do schools generally over-allocate set-asides, or do they under-allocate set-asides? I don't know if we have that data, or if we can try to find out.
Yeah.
So, that's a good question, thank you. We can certainly look that up, and see what we have in our history, in reference to set-asides. We typically work with the schools, though, throughout the process, to ensure that the schools are forthcoming, and identify the right number of spaces that they need for, as a set-aside, or for any other portion of the program. When a school has four or five classrooms that they've identified as computer labs, those are flags that we would look at, and inquire a little bit more about.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. And before you leave, have any of the dropdown options changed over the years, from, you know, the?
Like robotics, for example?
We've added, we've added items, we seldom take items off, because we believe that some of these things are grandfathered, and they are still used, but we do add, we do add programs such as a robotics lab, different types of labs.
Have we ever had a dropdown under allocation that was empty, empty classroom, empty space?
We don't have an empty space, we have an unallocated space. So, unallocated just means that we don't have a registered, caring roster teacher with students assigned to them in a classroom, or it's not assigned to one of the other categories, such as special ed, or district set-aside, or school set-aside. We have unallocated spaces that we can identify, but there isn't, we don't.
Right, we didn't use the word empty.
We don't, yeah.
Unallocated.
Unallocated, got it. Okay, two more questions, maybe, for Mr. Jose Gutierrez. How many spaces over what's available typically, like, tip us to do a multi-site offer? Is it like, one classroom, two classrooms, or like, we can't fit on a campus, and so we tip to a multi-site, or is it like, five classrooms, or do we know?
It's really a case-by-case basis, ma'am, it may not be just one or two, so it'd be hard to just make a general comment, it really is a case-by-case basis.
Okay, and then last one, let's see, if a charter has a community school as a part of their vision, or they have like, a real heavy parent engagement as a part of their vision, can they ask for an instructional room, or a classroom for that parent center, or for the community school, because it's a part of the charter? Like, would that count for instruction, or would that, if their enrollment doesn't allow for an extra room for that, they would be charged over allocation fees if they ended up using a room for something like that?
Usually, I don't believe those types of requests come in specifically, but in short, they're allocated based on the formula, and then they would utilize that space as they deem appropriate to fulfill their educational program.
Just based on student enrollment?
It's the end district, ADA, and then the process, there's a formula for that, and then they're allocated those number of spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, well, a lot of good questions, a good discussion, and I'm glad that we will, oh, we have one more question. But before the next last question, just thank you, Mr. Maffey, for just taking us down through the E-CAR process, it's been very illuminating. So, one more question, Board Member Goldberg.
I noticed in Slide 10 that you're talking about an additional input, and having feedback from various stakeholders, why?
So, we've been meeting with, we've met so far with, in regards to the definition, and/or the feedback from principals and teachers when it comes to how space is used, we're getting some feedback in regards to that.
Okay.
So, to your point that was made at the previous board meeting, I think there needed to be some clarity in regards to how are our principals using the space, and understanding the whole spectrum of all of that.
And finally, I'm going to conclude with something you said before, to make sure I understood it right, that wherever it is absolutely possible, you're going to implement the resolution that's already been passed, with the five existing schools that we have, because we know the kinds of things that we're looking to have happen.
Absolutely possible, taking into consideration those programs, and still trying to meet our legal obligation.
Well, we would never have you not meet your legal obligation, but I can't imagine, with the number of schools we have with empty classrooms in them, that the kinds of looks at some of the schools that we've routinely used, won't be routinely used at this point, even if they're requested, is that correct?
And again, it will. And again, it will depend on the case-by-case. So it depends on the area of request, what is available in that area, and how we would be able to. And we will always prioritize looking at our community schools, our priority schools, our BSEP schools. So we will do our very best in the current policy that we have, and making sure that we are able to meet that final obligation of offers. I can't say definitively, yes, this is what we're going to do, because I don't know, every single school is a very unique scenario, and it always.
We're talking about five requests.
Yes, but we look at all of them in the whole scheme of things. We look at every single, Prop 39 begins for us every single year, so we always have to look at the whole picture.
I'm only talking about the five requests.
Yeah, and so you have my commitment that we will look into that.
I'm talking about everything that you're looking at. I'm talking about the five requests.
No, I understand that, and we will do our very best to honor those programs.
Well, thank you again. And as we've seen, you know, moving forward, as a district now has an opportunity to restore the public's confidence in the colocation policy, as we have seen today, there's a lot of, a lot of areas that are gray, a lot of areas that still need to be illuminated in terms of what is the process and how can we move forward in this, in a way that is accountable, transparent, and just fair and honest. So now, as we hear that the district is going to gather stakeholder input, we must listen to this input. When we make decisions about colocations, we want these decisions to be made public. And when we decide to co-locate in different schools, we make sure that it's not harming one group or another, that we're being very ethical and moral for all students and all communities. So thank you. So with that said, we were going to move on now to public comment. So Mr. McLean, please take it away.
Okay, I'm going to call on four people. The first person come to the podium, and then the other three go to the right side of the room, near the portraits of the past superintendents, if you would. Christina Paston, are you here? Christina Paston, if you're here, come on up. You have two minutes to speak once you begin. After that, David Richardson, if you're here. David Richardson, if you're here, come on up and line up against the wall. Keith Delakila, come on up, also line up near the portraits of the, our illustrious past superintendents. And Samantha Navarro would be the fourth. So the first person to speak would be Christina Paston, are you here? Okay, great. You might want to just level the mic before you, before you go, and then you'll have two minutes to speak once you begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Christina Mariscal Pasten, and I'm here on behalf of Para los Niños, or PLN. PLN has been serving the communities of Los Angeles for over 40 years. Our holistic model provides high-quality education at seven early education centers and three charter schools. In addition, we run two of the city's youth source centers. All of our sites and schools provide mental health resources, basic needs, and other support services for children and their families. PLN serves approximately 800 students across our three charter schools. Two of them, our charter elementary school and our charter middle school, are in Los Angeles' Central City East neighborhood, known as Skid Row. The charter middle school serves over 300 students, where a growing number are recent arrivals to the U.S. Our middle school is also the partner school for the Union Rescue Mission, the only shelter on Skid Row, accepting children and families. Approximately 92% of families we serve live at or below the federal poverty level, and roughly 90% of our students are Latino, and the majority are English learners. Our schools disrupt generational poverty, empowering families to create strong communities. An investment in our learners and their families through extensive wraparound services enables them to thrive academically, physically, socially, and emotionally, providing them with a foundation that will carry them well beyond their time at PLN. It is critical that charter schools like PLN and others authorized by LAUSD are able to operate the programs they run to meet the unique needs of the children and families they serve. The policy being discussed today will have a deep impact, which is why we are advocating for broad community and stakeholder input. This way, all families can engage in this important discussion. As I close, I wish to extend an invitation to visit our schools or any of our sites so that you may witness the great work we are doing to support the whole child in the context of their family. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. David Richardson, please come on up. You have two minutes to speak once you begin.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? All right, good afternoon, board members. My name is David Richardson with the California Charter School Association. I'm a proud graduate of LAUSD and charter public schools. I'm here again to raise some concerns about the district's unwillingness to work with our community on the forthcoming Prop 39 policy. We work deeply, we worry deeply that this policy will harm existing charter school students, will increase colocations across LAUSD, and will pull more money out of the classroom. We worry that still no one from LAUSD has been willing to work with our community to hear those concerns. One, this resolution threatens existing schools who share space under Prop 39. We heard you say again and again that the resolution won't hurt existing schools, but now that's not how we read it. That's not what the staff analysis shows either. I hope we believe what you said, but it's hard when no one from the district is willing to meet with us to talk to those concerns. You started this charter committee, but of course you named the chair of the committee, the author of the resolution, someone who's called LAUSD kids and charter schools a cancer, and who repeats lies about charter schools being for-profit. For the record, I remind everyone that charter schools are nonprofit, free, public, and open to all. We'll never stop trying to find common ground, but we need this district to step up. We worry the policy will split charter schools across the district campuses, including many that are less suited for our students. When students need the most stability, you risk dividing communities, diverting resources out of the classroom, and into needless administrative overhead, and imposing new logistic challenges on the district and charter schools alike. We worry that this policy is likely to move charter schools further away from the families we serve, eliminating quality options for many families. For example, it could effectively ban charter schools from sharing space in South LA. After all, the campuses you propose to ban our, to ban our students from are not spread equally across LAUSD. They're concentrated in high-needs neighborhoods where more charter schools are located. The day you passed the resolution, it was abundantly clear to the board that you guys did not understand the fundamental principles of the law nor district operations. Now, it's fine to disagree with the law or with district practice, but it's irresponsible to try to force changes without a clear understanding. And it's downright malpractice to do so without having a discussion with the charter school communities that are directly impacted. Lastly, friendly reminder to fix the typo on page seven of your presentation, it's Prop 39, not 29. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Keith Delakila, please come on up. You have two minutes to speak once you begin. Thank you, I'm going to yield my time to Mr. Ted Morris.
Good afternoon. First, I'd like to say that two minutes is not enough time for everything I'd like to say, and I'd be happy to follow up with any of your offices individually outside of this forum. I'd like to share some of the harms that could be done to my school community, but there just isn't enough time, so I'll follow up in writing about that. My name's Ted Morris, I live in Boyle Heights, I run a high school in Boyle Heights. My son attends the LAUSD Elementary School in our neighborhood. I've been working in public education for three decades, 20, 20 years of that has been in charter schools authorized by LAUSD. During that time, I've negotiated 19 separate colocation shared-use agreements. I'm concerned that this policy is based on a flawed assumption that charter colocations cause harm to the district and to district students, but you haven't shared any actual data supporting that assumption. If the data exists, please don't be afraid to share it. We can help problem solve if we know what the specific problems are. The assumption seems to contradict the studies I've been able to find, like the study from Education Next in New York City where colocations are very common, and they found that colocations had a positive effect on non-charter, co-located students of .08 standard deviations on their math, and .06 standard deviation on their ELA performance. This seems to just discriminatorily attack a class of students. It applies without any supporting data that colocations harm students, but it singles out charter colocations without mentioning magnet programs, or language immersion programs, or pilot schools, which are also co-located in your district. It implies that middle school students pose a danger to elementary students, and high school students pose a danger to middle school students, but it makes no mention of the district's own span schools. I currently run a high school co-located with the middle school. In the years I've been there, there has never been a single act of violence between our schools, but to be frank, I've lost count of the fights of the middle schools among each other. We are not the danger here. Your justification of this policy is based on anecdotal evidence, but your anecdotes are from one side. You only hear one side because you don't return our calls. Ms. Goldberg had a single meeting with CCSA prior to this resolution, then proceeded to misrepresent the discussion in the public meeting. Moving forward, please include our voices. We want to be part of the solutions to these problems. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Samantha Navarro, please come on up. You'll have two minutes to speak once you begin.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Samantha Navarro. I am the proud principal of an independent charter in Gardena. We co-locate with Gardena High School. So I'm here to just shine some light on some positivity, especially from what I've heard earlier. And I want to specifically highlight what's over there on the pillars. Pillar four says operational effectiveness, and I believe 100% that that's what we do as a school. I have been co-located with Gardena High School for 10 years. I've been a part of New Millennium for 14. In the 10 years that we've been co-located, I've seen Gardena have three principals. In each of those principals, we have made positive communication, positive relationship building, three of their leaders, one of me, and I stand firmly behind what colocations do. I also want to say that because of our students, they're able to play sports. We are not a middle and a high school. We are two high schools that can actually coexist beautifully. Our kids play sports, our teachers and their teachers can collaborate, and it's only because relationships, communication, and collaboration. And with those three things happen, which I do effectively, and so does Mr. Davies at Gardena High School, he does effectively too, that we sound proud of what Prop 39 is. So again, I want to spread positivity here, and also, again, operational effectiveness, because that's what Prop 39s can be. And I also want to say this, we aren't trying to spread, as some would say, like a cancer, but we're trying to coexist peacefully. And if you want a prime example of that, come visit our campus. I would be happy to show you around. I'd include Mr. Davies on it, too, so you could be proud of what a true Prop 39 campus can be, and what we will truly continue to be. New Millennium Warriors, I'm proud to represent. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I'm going to call the next four folks. The first person, please, coming up to the podium. Rhonda Diomampo, David Defrenza, David Tokowski, and Dr. Latonya Derbengi. Please line up by the photos of the superintendents, and then Ms. Diomampo, you have two minutes to speak once you begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Rhonda Diomampo. I'm an LAUSD parent, and I proudly serve as the CEO of Synergy Academies. Synergy's three charter public schools all co-locate with LA Unified Schools on district campuses. We have been a collaborative part of these campuses since they first opened in 2010 and 2011. Over the years, we've held joint morning assemblies, we've worked together on mural projects, we've also helped to fund positions that benefit the entire school campus, such as extracustodial staff, and at Maya Angelou Community High School, even a full-time librarian and school nurse. Our students also play on the same sports teams with Maya students, and this fall, we are especially proud of a couple of firsts. We now have a girls' flag football team, and for the first time ever, our boys' football team is undefeated, 10-0 in the regular season, and we're cheering them on in the playoffs. I know you were updated today about Prop 39. Only one of our schools, Synergy Charter Academy, is a Prop 39 school. And because we didn't want to split our program between multiple school sites, we've always signed an alternative agreement in which we agree to take less classroom space than we are entitled to under the Prop 39 law. Signing an alt-agreement means not only have we decreased the number of potential colocations in our community, we have also increased the financial contribution to our resident school, and we have maintained stability for families. We've also been able to partner with Quincy Jones Elementary. Just last week, the schools held their annual trunk-or-treat event, which, as you can imagine, was very cute and lots of fun for students from both schools. I invite you to visit our schools, and in the spirit of collaboration, I ask that you please engage with the charter community as you develop a new Prop 39 policy. I am very concerned about the impact of this potential policy on both charter and district schools.
Thank you very much for your time.
And I would like to see the board consider the voices of parents, students, teachers, principals from both district and charter schools. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate your time. David Defrenza, please come on up. You'll have two minutes to speak once you begin. David Defrenza, two minutes. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. I want to thank district leadership for hearing my comments today. My name is David Defrenza, and I am the principal at Los Angeles Academy of Arts and Enterprise, a public charter school co-located at Belmont. I'm here to reiterate my deep concern that my community has over the new colocation resolution and forthcoming policy. I will always be grateful to the incredible onsite district teams I work with who continue to collaborate every day in the spirit of providing the best possible opportunities for every student who steps onto campus. But there is no question that colocations are imperfect, and we need to take a look at how to improve them. There has been a lot of discussion at board meetings recently about exactly what constitutes an empty classroom. While district clarity on that question is helpful, I think a discussion on how the district can best use E Cars to save space misses the legal and moral point. Prop 39 enshrined the district's exclusive authority to control many important funding sources for school construction. Therefore, it also included a mechanism to ensure equitable facilities access for the public school students who have chosen an alternative public education by requiring a provision of reasonable equivalent facilities for them. There has never been a Prop 39 imposition for the district to co-locate charter schools as it currently does, but regardless of what is put into an E Car, reasonably equivalent remains the requirement. To that point, the most pertinent question I hope the three of you will ask moving forward is not how the district limits set-asides, but instead, why some school set-asides end up in shared-use agreements as shared space, providing a co-located charter with a proportional allocation, and others do not, giving the district school exclusive access. I'll reiterate that in my last time because I think it's a very important question. Why do some set-asides end up in shared-use agreements and others do not? I think we need an answer to that question, and I don't think we have ever gotten one at all of the different board meetings that I've heard. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Mr. David Tokowski, come on up. You'll have two minutes to speak once you begin.
Before I begin, I'd like to provide a Williams complaint form for the board with respect to this space and its lack of respect for new moms and facilities to provide for the public, new moms as well.
You'll have two minutes to speak once you begin.
Thank you. We're LA Unified, and we can do a lot better. One thing that hasn't been discussed here at all is the school choice schools. Those schools are not like the ones you've heard from. They don't pay any facilities fee whatsoever. The colocation pays for the allocation. Number two, the E Car, Obama, oh my God, poor President Obama to hear that presentation. That school was built for 2,000 kids, 2,000 kids. There are 370 kids, there are 53 rooms. It never really came out, 53 rooms at that site. Even Veronica Melvin, with only 150 kids, has been allocated 10 classrooms. Both of those things are absurd. Look at the issues going on here. No training for principals, absolutely. We saw that there are four vice principals and a principal for 370 kids at Obama. Find out if they got any training on how to do the set-asides and develop their curriculum. Jackie, you were on the nose on so many things today. Other policies, putting a middle school charter on a middle school is asking for something we study in history called the Civil War. It's not the right way to do it, and you need to develop those feeder patterns. You brought that out. Two, you can move schools if they're affiliated magnets. If they're affiliated magnets, you give them a bus, and you can move them, you can make an opportunity for kids in schools to come. Without a bond coming up in November, you'll have no bathrooms, you'll still have wars over bathrooms, you'll have no space for the ETK. And we heard from Dean Tagawa, there's 49,000 kids that are missing in three and four-year-olds, at least, okay? Magnets are not bringing kids into the district, they're redistributing kids, okay? Get that through our heads. We're diluting the quality of magnets. All of these magnets were outperforming independent charters in math and English. And you dilute them, you're going to change those results. There are dozens of schools in this district now with less than 300 and 200 kids on a campus of four or six acres. Come to grips with that reality. Learn from the charters. My daughter went to elementary, to a magnet in the district, she went to a charter, she went to a private school, she went to the All Saints, she went to a Jewish day school. We've messed them up entirely, but I have a good sense that you can learn from different schools.
Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Tokowski.
And finally, there was no presentation of the statute, the law, only just people pulling policy out of their rear end to say in public, let's take this offline, is degrading the public sphere. This is a great committee, thank you for creating it.
Thank you for your time, sir. Dr. Latonya Derbengi, please come on up. Dr. Latonya D., come on up. Okay, it looks like you're not here. So we will call on the folks who've been waiting patiently on the line, on the telephone for a bit. So Elizabeth Hernandez, Elizabeth Hernandez, I see you're on the line. Please press star six to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes to speak once you begin. Elizabeth Hernandez.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Hernandez.
I'm an organizer with A's. And I'm also a parent of the LAUSD. I have two kids, one on 28th Street, one on Santee. So we're here to remind this committee of the big problem that was uncovered in the school board meeting in September. So we've been chucked about learning how we have been misleading by the district for years about what the definition of an empty classroom is. For years, we have given away space in our public schools to charters under the assumption that we had to base, that we had to base on the state law. That was a big lie. This came at the meet-in of many of our schools, and it is engaging to learn that was not a state law, but some internal policy at LAUSD. This is unacceptable, and we cannot let it go without any recourse. We have made the following demands and have yet to hear from the superintendent. We need to audit all the agreements made under the definition of what an empty classroom is. The termination of Jose Cole Gutierrez and all of the staff responsible for giving us misleading information. A meeting with Superintendent Carvalho to discuss the potential remedies to this problem. We think it's important of the conversation with colocations and the response to these needs as part of our superintendent process policy. Also, it's outrageous that we are getting an explanation on the current E-Car system without addressing the questions around the definition of an empty classroom. It is also ridiculous that there has been so little done on this policy when the resolution clearly gave a 45-day timeline. I'm not that all these teachers are coming out, you know, talking about their charter schools, but let's get one clear. Where are all the other people from the other charter schools that are being evicted, our students?
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate your time. Thank you for calling in. Okay, Antonieta Garcia, I see you're on the line. Please press star six to unmute yourself, and you have three minutes to speak when you begin, Antonieta Garcia.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Yes, hi. My name is Antonieta Garcia, and I'm a parent leader from A's and Reclaim Our Schools Los Angeles. I'm also, as well, an LAUSD parent. My daughter came from a collocated elementary school that was Hamasaki Elementary School during that time. She's no longer there anymore, but she did attend there. And I am here to remind this committee of the big problem that was uncovered in the school board meeting in September. We were also shocked to learn that we had been misled by the district for years about what the definition of an empty classroom is. For years, we have been giving away space on our public schools to charter schools under the assumption that we had to base on the state law. But we're now learning that several of our those rooms may not have qualified for empty classrooms. This came as a deterrent of many of our schools, and it is irraging and very upsetting to learn that this was not a state law, but also an internal policy at LAUSD. This is unacceptable, and I am truly disgusted by this. And we cannot let it go by without anything. We have made the following demands and have yet to hear from the superintendent and audit of all agreements made under the definition of what an empty classroom is. The termination of Jose Cole Gutierrez and all of their other staff responsible for giving misleading information. A meeting with the Superintendent Carvalho to discuss the potential remedies to this problem. We think that this is very important of the conversation with colocation. Any response to this is need as part of the superintendent to write this policy.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate your time. Thank you for calling in. Take care. Okay, going back to in-person, Mr. Juan Magandi. I see you're here, or at least you were earlier. Come on up. Mr. Magandi is going to speak in Spanish, and if you want to hear what he's saying in English as he's speaking it. We have passed out these headsets when you were walking in. I'm not sure if folks have them. Let me make sure they're going to get passed out. Por favor, espere un momentito, por favor. I have a plan. While I get these headsets, let's make sure we get the online caller going while we pass out these headsets. Or... Okay, we'll go ahead. So everyone who wants a headset, will you please put your hand up, and then we'll... One more hand up in the back.
Hello. Eight years ago, when I was president, I decided to collaborate with UTLA about how we can preserve these spaces so that charter schools wouldn't invade us. I was one of those fundamentalists that thought that charters were terrible and were going to convert the schools into something disastrous. That is the furthest thing from the truth. I'm realizing that after eight years, we've lost half of our membership. I'm also noticing that the unions haven't protected the schools, because a lot of the things to lose the schools are that the delegates in the different unions and the schools are boycotting to have more open spaces for these students. So now we're going to convert it into daycare and a shelter. We are in a decaying slope because we're not doing community things because it's not aligned with our interests. So today, the problem isn't that charters are better or worse. The problem is that charters have demonstrated the mediocrity that the district has to have an emergent population of need and the disgrace for the minorities that don't have the privilege to have a career, a doctorate, or something like that, especially Afro-Americans and Latinos. This is the biggest problem that we're not talking about. It's a bureaucracy that's eating the future of our future, and we have all these teachers that are the victims also too, because they're overworked to maintain this union going that isn't reinvesting back into the community, only their personal interests and all of their electoral matters. It's not possible that we continue with this without doing... The parents are the absent ones. The victims of these disasters are the children, the education, and our parents. You're culpable. And good that charters are here, because they deserve what you don't.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Shawna Draxton, are you here? Shawna Draxton, come on up. You'll have two minutes to speak when you begin.
Good afternoon. I'd like to yield my time to Jessica Oni, our elementary school principal.
Good afternoon. My name is Jessica Oni, and I am the proud principal of Wish Community School. We serve approximately 847 students, and this is our 13th year of colocating. I'm frustrated with your decision to pass a resolution that has an intent to ban charter school students from public school spaces. The public charter school community has been shut out of this policymaking process. There's so much opportunity for our communities to work together and put behind us this tired us-versus-them attitude. It serves no one. Doing so requires courage, a commitment to real leadership, and an honest reckoning with the troop. I hope that as we try to figure out our future, we really make sure that we refine this policy and we work earnestly with the charter school community. There are opportunities to reduce the need for sharing spaces in the first place and to make it better for all students. It has been challenging to listen to the inaccuracies over the last few months and to continue to hear some of these untruths repeated when you swore to represent all public school children, including charter school public school children in Los Angeles Unified. LA's charter public schools are instrumental in providing all students a myriad of public school educational options, ensuring that students receive the opportunities and support that they need to succeed. That's what we do. You say, "Take back our schools," but yes, let's take them back from nonsense and politics. Let's look at those E-Car reports. There's an abundance of available space. Look at the fiscal reports, and let's be responsible. Colocations do not harm traditional schoolchildren. Misinformation, a lack of appropriate facilities allocations, and unwillingness to reconfigure schools and hoarding public school space does just that. Students have a right to excellent public education. Our teachers and students are doing just that, as evidenced by our test scores that are way above the county and state averages. Again, I would like to invite you to our school. We would love to show you what's going on there and be a partner in this process.
Thank you for your time. Okay, it looks like we have another in-person speaker. Alison Diaz, are you here? Come on up, Alison Diaz. You'll have two minutes to speak when you begin.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Alison Diaz, founder of Environmental Charter Schools. A network of four schools, our mission is to reimagine public education in low-income communities of color. More important, we get kids to care, care about their communities, and to take action locally. Our campuses are peaceful oases of fruit trees, living streams, and green best practices that nurture the whole child. We have won many awards for the "E" in our name and our success with students. 96% of our students, year after year, are admitted to four-year universities. We serve 1,500 students living in South Los Angeles. Our students mirror the communities in which we are located. 95% of our students are people of color. 84% of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch. Over 50% are students that have been reclassified or are English language learners. 12% of our students have IEPs. While we are not LAUSD authorized, two of our schools are located within LAUSD, and more than half of our families live within LAUSD boundaries. What I'm hearing today from speakers is resonant. It resonates. The experience of LAUSD's families and educators and charter schools is one of being othered and of being treated as less than because of the public schools we've chosen.
Keep going. That ding is not for you.
That's been the ECS experience. Even though we serve LAUSD families, LAUSD has made no attempt to work with, share resources, or partner. My ask, it's a plea. Stop attacking one model of school. Stop dividing our communities. Instead, be leaders and bring all stakeholders together. I've been here for more than two decades in this work, coming to LAUSD board meetings, and it's just as rigid and as frightening as it's always been. And it doesn't need to be this way. We've heard that today. When there's so much conflict in this world that we live in, we don't need to bring that home to our kids. Let's seek another, more collaborative model for our education, one that strives to strengthen schools for all students and uses charter schools as an important strategy for innovation and learning. Laco makes this effort with our schools. Let's move forward differently and together for kids that we all serve. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. And our final remote caller is Eloisa Galindo. I see you're on the line, Eloisa Galindo. Please press star six to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes to speak when you begin, Eloisa Galindo. Eloisa Galindo, are you there?
Mi comentario va ser en español, por favor.
Sí, pase.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Eloisa Galindo, and I am part of Abrosa LA. But today, I am going to speak about East LA Parents Against Privatization. On September 26, we discovered what is happening with a colocation. And as they had said, this is dividing the community. And you know what divides us? It's the California Charter School Society and those millennials that want to privatize education. I have seen this. I know this. Midway through December of 2020, I was in the meeting because Jackie Goldberg and the others that support public education did something good, that it's not to put A, B, C, D schools because the ones that had S were going to be closed, and it was part of the privatization. And within the Board of Education, there is corruption. For example, Monica Garcia, at this moment, she called to be out and said, "Look at that mom that's sitting over there." It is because she's feared that Kip takes away the money from Mariana. And that was out of place. Jackie Goldberg, as always, has the voice for the public education of students and teachers, defended me. And you can find that video. And that is censoring. That is privatization. That is to take away the parents' voice. And today, I am here to say, to do an audit of all the agreements that were made when you gave away the spaces, to be accountable and to have a supervision. And I ask for Jose Cole Gutierrez to go. He does not have to be separating parents. It has to be respect and equity in there. And a meeting with the superintendent as well so that we can get to certain agreements and talk about what is going on, because it's not fair that it's just the children.
Thank you very much for your time. It's been just over two minutes. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. There's one more person listed who signed up to speak remotely. Evalia Panero Pace? Are you in the room by chance? Because you're not signed in remotely. I just want to make sure we call you in case you're here. Okay, that concludes public comment.
Well, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here in person and remotely, and thank you for our public comments. Reminder that this committee meeting and all materials for this meeting and prior meetings are archived on lausd.org/boe. And also, the next committee meeting will be December 7. Thank you so much, and have a wonderful afternoon.